Okay, when those lights go on, ladies and gentlemen, you're live. So look at the cameras out there. All right. Good evening. And we're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of March 26, 2019 is now called to order. The time is 6:04 PM. May I ask, Ms. Morgan, are you on with us? Is Ms. Morgan there? We'll check again. Okay, good evening. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in a silent mode. I'm talking to myself. I didn't do that this afternoon. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. The agenda can also be found at the district's website, www.lee schools.net. Navigate to the Leadership tab and choose School Board. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of our district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential. And the district's vision, to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of this evening's board meeting, we have been enjoying the sounds of the singing sea stars. Is that supposed to be a tongue twister? The premier chorus at Tropic Isles Elementary School, under the direction of Susan Hamilton. The choir consists of students from grades three to five who have successfully audited, auditioned to be a part of this chorus. It provides its singers with an opportunity to come together, to rehearse, and perform a wide range of choral literature for children's choir, as well as learning proper singing and choral techniques. Students are also given the opportunity to perform in both school and community events, such as this one, this evening. At this time, the singing sea stars will perform one more number. Last pictures. Okay. Thank you all so very much. We're going to take a quick break while they exit. And thank you so much for coming, Tropic Isles. Okay, as I said, one of our members is joining us by phone. And actually, Ms. Morgan, you're going to be here more than by phone because I have your shawl, I'm freezing. Thank you for that, right? Okay. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, four recognitions, public comment, consent items, which include five executive services, two academic services, one business services, three items under human resources, one of which is good cause. Dr. Atkins, can you please provide the explanation?
Yes, I will, Madam Chair. Not all that long ago, our high school principals came to me with a specific request regarding safety and security at our high schools. The request had to do with just really providing good supervision in our hallways and our restrooms. So we have worked with our high school principal and our budget department and our human resources division to provide a job description and position so that we can get them some additional supervision until the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. And as presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda, as well as there will be one item under information services, seven items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Moved.
Everybody's moved. Ms. Jordan, and then seconded by?
Mary.
Okay. Ms. Fisher. And please record your vote.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I... They're asking me to vote, and I'm not allowed to vote.
Since she's on the phone, she doesn't vote on?
She doesn't vote because she's on the phone. That's correct.
Should she abstain for the purposes of the computer program?
Yes.
Okay. Are you on the computer, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if you have that up there, if you can just do abstain.
I don't now. I had it up initially, and it went away.
Okay. All right. Well, next time on the next vote, right, Mr. Williams, he can do abstain?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the vote is 6-0, and the motion carries. Ms. Giavinelli will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Vaughn will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And, um, let's see. Do I go on with the rest of that now? Yes. Okay. After the special presentations portion of the agenda briefly set... Well, we did that, sorry. Okay. Please rise for invocation.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we pray for hope and peace. We pray for the superintendent and his district staff. Come stir in your hope within our hearts and renew our faith. Lord, we pray for vision. We may your vision fill our lives as we seek to reveal your love. May every action be done in love, for this is my prayer for our community. We serve with love. We ask all this in this glorious name, amen.
Amen.
The cadet presenting the national colors tonight will be introduced by Lieutenant Colonel Barry C. Dickerson, the senior army instructor at Benita Springs High School. Lieutenant Colonel Dickerson retired from active army in 2014 after 29 years of service. He is a Desert Storm and an Iraq War veteran. And Lieutenant Colonel, thank you for your service. Prior to arrival in Lee County, he was the deputy director for the first Human Resources Sustainment Center in, wow, Kaiser-Sautern. Is that it? Kaiser-Sautern, Germany.
Thank you. The national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight will be presented by Cadet Captain Steel Byrne of the Cypress Lake High School JROTC Panther Battalion. He is the captain of the robotics team and the cyber patriot commander. He currently holds a 3.5 GPA. He is a junior cadet, and he aspires to be the battalion commander next year. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You may be seated.
Uh, actually, now we will go down for awards.
I'm going to combine our two recognitions because they involve the same group of outstanding individuals. I'd like the district's Executive Director of Financial Services, Ms. Susan Millay, and the Director of Financial Services, Mr. Mark Santiago. Would you join me at the lectern, please? I would also like for Jeanette Ingersoll, Fiscal Control Supervisor and the Accountants, Ms. Lucy Best, Ms. Linda Maxwell, and Ms. Lori Tant from the Financial Accounting Department to come forward, please.
Ms. Tant, right? Yes.
Okay, thank you. The district's Financial Accounting Department has once again earned two of the most prestigious awards in the financial accounting field. Both are related to the preparation and reporting of the district's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. That is exciting. The district's comprehensive annual financial report, that's exciting. The first award is the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented by the Association of School Business Officials International. And the second award is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented by the Government Finance Officers Association. The fact that our financial accounting department has received these awards for the past 15 years speaks volumes of the expertise and dedication of the staff. We are very pleased to recognize the Financial Accounting Department for receiving these awards. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica, board members, Dr. Atkins. I just wanted to publicly thank my staff. I have a wonderful staff who works tirelessly every day to make sure that we record the financial transactions of the district with efficiency and with accuracy. So they don't take that lightly, and they work very diligently every day. And I just wanted to publicly recognize them and thank them because it's through their efforts that we're able to receive these awards tonight. So thank you.
Okay. I would like to ask Artemis Cale, Juan Diaz, from the Supervisor of Elections Office, and Principals Christina Britton, Ed Matthews, Jackie Corey, and Michelle Court to join me at the lectern. As they're walking, I'm going to go ahead and start reading. Each year, the Lee County Supervisor of Elections Office invites all the public high schools to participate in its High Schools Voters Registration Challenge. This outreach has been successful in registering thousands of new young voters since 1999. This year, the following 12 Lee County high school participated: Cape Coral High, City of Palms High, Cypress Lake High, Dunbar High, East Lee County, Astero, Fort Myers, Ida S. Baker, Island Coast, Lee High Senior, Mariner High, North Fort Myers High, Northern, Palms Charter High, Oasis Charter High, Palms Acre Charter High, and South Fort Myers. Once each school's voters, registration applicants are verified and processed, they are all tallied against the percentage of the school's eligibility students. The high schools with the greatest registration percentage was selected to display the traveling trophy during the upcoming year, which they have, right?
It's no longer a travel.
It's not longer traveling. The board members and superintendent are pleased to welcome the Supervisor of Elections Office, who will announce the winners of this year's High School Voters Registration Challenge.
Good evening, members, audience, and colleagues. It is a pleasure for me to be representing Mr. Doyle as our Supervisor of Elections. And also, along with my colleague Juan Diaz, it's been a challenge. It's been a very rocky year, but we were able to register 23% of Oasis Charter High School students. This is the first time in of the challenge that we're actually presenting the first trophy, the first place to Oasis Charter School. And there is no more traveling trophy, so we're breaking the routine. We're doing something different. They get to keep it. All right. Now, I need, um, okay. The second place is for South Fort Myers High School. Christina was very helpful.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And then we have a tie between Island Coast and Lee High Senior High School. Representing Island Coast, I have? Casey.
Thank you.
And we will make sure that Lee High Senior High gets their trophy later. Thank you very much.
Good evening. The Florida Dance Education Organization State Performance Assessment was held February 1, 2019, in Tampa, Florida. Middle and high school students from the Lee County School District attended and earned all state recognition and awards in various areas. Special studies must be learned and performed by dancers who are assessed by college professors in technical proficiency, movement, and ensemble performance. The school board and superintendent are very pleased to recognize the students and staff. At this time, I'd like to invite the dancers from North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, Principal Tom Millens, and Teacher Mrs. Lori Madel to please come forward. They are amazing dancers and performers. And now, I'd like to invite dancers from Cypress Lake High School Center for the Arts, Principal Ms. Angela Rolls, teachers Patty Gare and Nancy Burnham. Please come forward. Maybe you guys can make two rows and come to the center, dancers. Great. Awesome. Congratulations, Cypress Lake. And last but not least, dancers from Lee High Senior High School, Principal Ms. Jackie Corey, and teachers Lauren Gomez and Amy Sassfran. Please come forward. Okay, come on to the center, so you can get your picture taken. Congratulations, Lee High Senior dancers.
And I failed to introduce our special guest up here this evening, so I will do it now. This evening's student representative from the school board's Student Advisory Committee is Alicia Bernau. Is that correct? Bernau. A senior at North Fort Myers High School, participating in Cambridge ACE and Arts Program. Alicia is a member of the Varsity Swim Team, earning the MVP distinction in 2016, as well as the Cavalieri Rossi Mixed Choir. Last year, she was a founding member and the Vice President of the Special Populations Youth Corps, a student-run advocacy group for adults with special needs. This is Alicia's fifth year, serving on the Student Advisory Committee to the school board, two of which she has led as Chair. She has also spent the past two years representing her school on the Cape Coral Youth Council, and this year, as Vice Chair. Alicia was recently elected the Secretary of the National Honor Society and Treasurer of the Tri-M Music Honor Society. Outside of school, you mean you have time after all of this? Alicia enjoys figure skating, piano, flute, guitar, and violin. She is thrilled to be representing the Student Advisory Committee tonight. Welcome, Alicia. Okay, next, we have public comment. Mr. Williams, will you please address the agenda item of public comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity, at this point in the meeting, to address the board concerning any matter on the meeting's agenda, or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it to me before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card, but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Gittens, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The board... The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow the rules regarding decorum shall be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks shall be required to relinquish the lectern per Board Policy 1.11. Time per speaker is three minutes. Madam Chair, I have four cards.
And prior to that, if any of our performers or their parents would like to leave, we will give you the... You thought I was going to keep you here all night, right? Okay, yeah, you can't leave. All right. Thank you so much for coming.
Great job.
I was getting those looks like, "I thought we could leave after this."
Oh, the blue one? Yeah. You're pretty.
Okay. We offer the opportunity, to those who may be unfamiliar with public comment process, to raise their hand and provide their names. The blue card is a public record identifying those who speak, providing contact information for our staff to follow up. If you did not complete a blue comment card, you can see Ms. Johnson after completing your comments, so that we have a written record. Before calling the first card, Mr. Williams, if there's anyone on my left that would... that does not have a card that would like to speak? Anyone on my right? Okay, Mr. Williams, please call the first card.
Our first speaker tonight is Ms. Joy Williams.
Try one.
And I teach art at Cypress Lake Middle. I welcome this opportunity to address the wonderful Lee County School Board regarding the vital importance of keeping art in our public schools. Humans seem to have a basic instinct to create. The ability for Homo sapiens to transfer knowledge through cave art and little pieces of art that they found, the oldest 400,000 years old, has separated and elevated us from the Neanderthals, and it put us on a trajectory toward modern humankind. Even today, when you given a chance, a child will draw as soon as they can hold a crayon. What we may think as only random marks are actually the child's individual expression of what they see in their world. A child may see a dog, they may see a cat. The child observes these similarities and differences between the species, codifies the conclusions with very crude drawings, and then talks to their parents or their preschool teachers to share and confirm their findings. Eventually, they can distinguish what makes a cat a cat, what makes a dog a dog. With the increasing emphasis on text-based instruction, let us not forget to capitalize on visual thinking. The power of illustrated books makes a bridge between the gap of seeing and reading. They allow our very youngest students to research for context clues and make predictions about a story plot, even before a child can read an alphabet. As students grow older, art and visual thinking remain an essential method for learning. In our middle schools, where I teach, students are taught the process of constructive criticism. To do this, they must grapple with ambiguity. They must infer meanings in artworks within many different cultural contexts. Students learn to give advice to their peers regarding how to improve their art, without chiding, without ridiculing, without making disparaging remarks, all very critical skills for any future job, not just the arts. And middle school is not merely a preparation for high school. It's a time for our students to discover where their talents lie, and what they actually love to do. Students enrolled in the visual and performing arts classes learn to harness their imagination, to collaborate as a team, like we just saw up here with our high school dancers, and to persevere against all odds in order to make their dreams reality. Many high school students claim that they would give up, they would drop out, except for the fact they wanted to be in band class, or dance, or theater. Not every child will become... grow up to become a famous artist, I know that as an art teacher. Not every child will become a prima ballerina, or a virtuoso violinist, or a Broadway...
I'm sorry, ma'am, you are out of time. Our next speaker is Samantha Hauer.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Adkins, Mr. Williams. I really appreciate you giving us this time. My name is Samantha Hauer. I wear many hats in service of Lee County art students, including being a teacher at Mariner High, and the LAEA High School Art Show Director. I personally wish to thank you all for all that you do in support of the arts. We have an extraordinary set of art students here in Lee County, and your support means the world to them. I brought one of those art students with me here tonight to share her thoughts, be a representative of our National Art Honor Society, as our public chair, or our Chair of Public Relations, and to help me formally invite you to our annual LAEA art shows at the Alliance for the Arts. Without your support and the support of the community partnership, like the Alliance for the Arts, our students would miss out on these wonderful opportunities, and I hope we continue to build these opportunities in the future. I'd like to second what Joy Williams said about the importance of the arts, all of them, and I truly believe that art can change lives, save lives, and bring people together. I want to, again, thank you for all that you do in support of all of the arts, and I appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is Alex Zabala.
Good evening. My name is Alex Zabala, and as Mrs. Hauer introduced me, I am the Chair of Public Relations for the National Art...
Sorry about that.
Fine.
There you go.
Okay. I am the Chair of Public Relations for the National Art Honor Society at Mariner High School, among many other things that I do at the school. And to touch upon the importance of art and how much it means for our students, high school is a very stressful time, for the teachers, for the students, for everybody in between, and not just high school, all of school, whether that's with exams, or figuring out what you're going to do once you go off to college, and everything that comes in between your freshman year to your senior year, from kindergarten to fifth grade and going on. Something that's a good stress relief, a good way to express yourself, and words simply aren't enough, is art. And me, if I'm being honest, I'm not the best artist, I'm not the best painter, I'm not the best drawer, my circles come out lumpy. And that's okay, but for me, finding a way to express myself in art, even if it's not the best, is definitely a stress relief when I'm approaching my senior year, and I'm getting ready to graduate, and there's all these decisions to make. And this is something that other students find important in as well. It's not just painting, it's dancing, it's singing, it's playing the piano or the violin, and finding all of these different elements in which they're able to express themselves, in which where words come falling short, they're not able to say what they feel, but instead, they're able to express it in a different manner. And that's incredibly important, not only for me, but for other students who struggle to put their thoughts into action, or who struggle to find a different outlet. And this is something that should continue to be funded, and something that should be supported by not only the board, but by the community as well. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and express my thoughts. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Mr. Anthony Thomas.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chairman. My name is Anthony Thomas. I wanted to address you all. I spent early today, I came in early to listen to your briefing that you had, your workshop. I'm normally a progressive person, a happening person, I like new things, but on this matter, I think I'm going to be a small D conservative. I've been around the school district a long time, we have a way of doing business here in Lee County, and there are two things that you guys are discussing, after watching your briefing, I have to totally disagree with. The first issue is issue with the board attorney. We've seen a lot of school boards, you guys have received adequate notice, 60 days, that your board attorney is going to be leaving. I see no reason to reinvent the wheel. One of the things that was brought up, nobody discussed it, will there ever be a time where there's a conflict of interest if you merge the board attorney with the school district attorney? Well, usually, the school district attorney has to be a labor lawyer, they have to know all kind of labor issues, et cetera. The board attorney has to know Florida statutes, and how to keep you guys from violating the law. So, they practice two different type of laws. Now, with the issue with this board attorney situation, it seemed like to me, the chair could easily ask Robert Dodik, who's dedicated a substantial number part of his career, to the school district to stay on an extra 30 or 60 days until this board met and got the resume and got the necessary things required to get a board attorney. I think it is going to be a tremendous mistake if you go and merge these two things together. Case in point, when they go to do a negotiating with the superintendent on this contract, who's he going to represent? The person who is his boss, or is the board? There's going to be lots of conflicts of interest. I think you guys are making a tremendous mistake if you go down this path. Now, the other issue of great concern is the issue dealing with the auditor. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel. The people in Tallahassee have mandated something to have uniformity with all the 67 counties. Do you all know, I'm sitting here watching the debate earlier today, and I'm saying, Mary Fisher, you've been on this board 10 years, you ought to know that Lee County already had an auditor position when Dr. Browder was the superintendent. Anybody here who's been around long enough to know, all you need to do is go back, consult with the old rules and regulations and board policy, and say, "Oh, we had a board policy right here that had this auditor"? You reconstitute the old office. There's no need to have the... what's this? The clerk's office do an audit? That ain't going to work. There's no need, as Gwen said, to bring an outside audit firm, and you put that person on retainer. You know, there's a thing, when you hire somebody to come in and audit you, they're going to give you the type of audit that you want, or next time, you won't hire them. We need what they have in Palm Beach County. This board needs to have a workshop, they need to talk about what they have in West Palm Beach, Palm Beach County, because it's working over there. They have a bigger school district than we have, they have 2.4, 2.5 billion, we have 1.5. So, they're a bigger school district, and I think we need to go in that direction. Thank you.
It's all the blue cards. Thank you. Ms. Williams, and Ms. Howard, and Alex, is that... is that correct? Okay. Thank you so much to the three of you for talking about the arts. They are a necessary part of our lives and of our students' lives, and I heard you mention critical thinking skills and ability with struggling students that were mentioned. And it's true, because students can find who they are and get lost in their art, and be the people that are the best for themselves. So, thank you so much for bringing that forward. Mr. Thomas, thank you for your comments and suggestions. We will take that into consideration regarding the attorney. And regarding the auditor, we do have had... currently did have an auditor on the... with the board several years ago. But as I have often said, whenever there's a change, or someone leaves, or there's a place that needs to be filled, it's an opportunity to look at improvements or changes that we could make. And I believe that's the way we're looking at it at this point, but thank you for your suggestions, and thank you, everyone that spoke. Okay. Next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to the board members seven days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding recommendations. Some of these items also have been briefed or worked shop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished or tabled items portion? Ms. Fisher?
No pulls this evening.
Ms. Giovinelli?
I have two.
And numbers, please.
G2, approval and adoption of revision of job descriptions, positions, and reclassification and alignment of the appropriate salary schedule. And consent, I consent operations, number seven, approval of advisory services contract for Newport Board Group LLC.
So, G2 and I7. Okay, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'm actually pulling the same ones as Ms. Giovinelli, G2 and I7.
Okay. And Ms. Morgan, do you have any pulls?
No, I do not.
Okay. She can't do that? Oh, okay. Sorry, I tried, Ms. Morgan. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items, with the exception of G2 and I7?
Alloped.
Ms. Vaughn, and seconded by?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Fisher, please record your vote. Did everyone vote? And the motion passes 6-0. Okay, we have two... Okay, we have two pulled items to address. Am I okay, Ms. Williams?
You are.
Okay. And the first one, Dr. Atkins, will you read your recommendation for a pulled item, I guess G2?
I recommend one new job description, two salary schedule and two new job descriptions to the instructional TAOX salary schedule, one revision and two new job descriptions on the administrative salary schedule, approval of the one position and one reclassification. Estimated fiscal impact of the, for the remainder of FY19 would be $28,859.
Is there a motion for the pulled item?
A motion to pull the item.
Okay, Ms. Giovinelli, second.
Second.
Ms. Vaughn? And the item has been moved and seconded is their discussion.
Yes, so I'm, I'm only pulling the part about the coordinator equity and civil rights compliance position and the coach diversity and inclusion position. And I'm, I'm not actually opposed to it, I just felt like that I had contacted the, to the Chair of EDAC and asked if EDAC had had an input on it and he told me they had not. So I just feel like that EDAC needs to have a little input on it and, and out of respect for that advisory committee, I would ask that it be ran through them and then come back to us. That's really where I'm at. I just want to make sure that we have advisory committees, we need to be doing things through those committees. That's really where I stand.
And Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, and I am also wanting to make sure that we have positions that support our equity and civil rights for our employees and our students, but the two, actually the two that I'm pulling are coach and coordinator for equity and civil rights. I do have some specifics that I wanted to address. I'll start with coordinator. First of all, major function, perform specialized work related to equity and civil rights compliance for the district. To me, that is just way too vague. There are just so many aspects that would be included in this. I question the minimum qualifications, bachelor's degree, three years in HR, lean sigma preferred, because later, under job functions, one of the bullet points says, maintain professional licensure and certifications. Now, that's an interesting comment for job functions, because there's nothing here to address what kind of training, I mean, what, what kind of training will that individual need to have? What kind of certification and licenses will that individual have to have? I really find that I can't vote in favor of something that is so vague and that basically says that somebody with HR, business administration, a related or a related field plus three years in human resources is qualified to do this very important job. I'm also wondering, under essential job functions, conduct inquiries and investigations of employee complaints. And I went through this several times. One comment I have is, does this take the place of professional standards or does this work in tandem with professional standards, number one? And number two, actually three things, and number two, I went through this several times, does this person oversee students as well? I see no reference to that. And finally, my question is, who oversees prevention efforts to avoid violations? Because that's hugely important. We wouldn't have some of the issues that have come up in the past in the school district if we had a better effort to prevent the violations to begin with. And those are my questions with the coordinator and I have similar questions with the other position.
Ms. Morgan, if you don't have a comment, can you mute for us?
I'm actually going to make a comment.
Oh, okay.
I'm allowed to make comments, I just can't vote.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
My comment is this, I do agree that, and shame on me, I didn't think of this myself, but I do think that the three positions, coordinator, equity and civil rights compliance, coach, diversity and inclusion, specialist support, oh no, excuse me, just the two, should be referred back to EDAC. We refer decisions that we're making in finance and curriculum to those committees. I think we owe EDAC the same thing. And I would refer the coordinator capital projects management back to the, the committee that, construction advisory. And then, so my preference would be to split out director, school counseling and mental health services and manager project facilities, vote on those tonight and send, oh, and specialist support district intervention. Send the rest back to the advisory committees to come back to the board at a later date.
Agree with you, and just, just for the record, though, Scott Rickenback did speak to the construction advisory about the position and brought it up to us and actually solicited them if they knew anyone, so he's, he has, he did brief them, but we didn't, they didn't give a recommendation, so I'm still okay with what you're saying, Ms. Morgan, so I, but, but just for the record, I just wanted to bring that forward.
And actually, my-
I appreciate it, thank you.
My comment is about the project facilities and capital projects position as well. Some construction professionals spoke to me about it and they said, for one thing, in the economy that we have right now, it's going to be very difficult to get someone with a bachelor's or a bachelor's or master's degree in these positions, because if they have those qualifications, they can pick, choose and refuse. So it kind of depends on how critical and how soon we need it. If we need to look at perhaps someone with the equivalent of experience that can run projects and facilities that may have been in, in the business for a long time and knows what they're talking about. I just don't know if we're kind of pricing ourselves out, asking for a bachelor's or a master's degree, and that was, that was my question. Yes?
I'd just like to hear from the superintendent.
Yes.
On these items, please.
Well, I can certainly take these items under advisement, I don't have an issue with that. I would be very reluctant to start bringing all job descriptions through advisory committees. I really would discourage that. I can certainly understand some of these, these are some special circumstances, particularly as it relates to coordinator and some of these high-profile areas, but, you know, the typical job descriptions, there's hundreds and hundreds of these job descriptions that we have to go through. You hire experts in these fields that spend a lot of time reviewing these job descriptions and, and to, to bring every one of those through advisory committees. The other thing that I want to distinguish between a board auditor position, that is a board position, and to take it through a board advisory committee makes sense, but these other positions are staff positions and to take every, of the hundreds of staff positions through board advisory would be, it would really, I think, totally hamstring the entire process of, you know, we're expected to do job descriptions review on a regular ongoing basis. It's a very, very difficult process that requires a lot and to, to put this additional burden on staff, I just don't feel would be reasonable. Now, having said that, the, the requests regarding the, the items that were mentioned here, again, high-profile, that's fine, we can certainly do that and bring those back. I would like to definitely move forward on the other ones, those are critically important. I think that we've got staff working at a higher capacity, particularly at the director position, that is well needed. The other position is really just a tweak to the job description and taking it back to a title that's more appropriate. And again, it's something we need to move on pretty quickly.
Yes. Might it be helpful if we had a 10 or 15-minute briefing overview of the process that staff goes through when they amend or change or create a job description? So that we don't-
Yes, mm-hmm. Well, and we will, we can certainly do that. I mean, one of the things that you know that we have been working on the phase two job description process, and that can be a part of that briefing when, when we're ready to bring that back to the board.
Thank you.
I think what may have happened, and you did give an explanation of the auditor position, because that did go actually to, to finance before it came to us. And if that's the way that we're going to work, then we need to discuss the protocol and how that's supposed to look. And I think that's what kind of set off, well, if this group is going to discuss it, and you gave the explanation that that is a board position, I just, I still feel, though, that advisory boards are advisory boards and we should send them, it should go from this direction out rather than for them to look at things and then we look at them. Ms. Jordan?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I definitely agree with Dr. Atkins regarding the staff. As far as bringing this to EDAC for permission, I just think that's ridiculous, because they are an advisory committee, and that is not their mission. They have a clear mission of what they are supposed to do, and for us to have to go through them in order to make a hire just is not, I don't understand that at all. The information would definitely eventually go there when we have our meeting with them and we would then share that information, as we do every time we go, and something has taken place, we share what is going on in the district that pertains to them. But to have them look at it to say, yes, I agree that, yeah, this is what you should do, I don't see where, where that, why we should do that.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, and I did want to address several other things having to do with the other position that I did not speak on, the, the coach. The first thing I wanted to say with all due respect to Ms. Jordan, we don't go to our advisory boards for permission, but I think it behooves us when we have a very specialized committee that is dealing with the civil rights issues that have been so important to this school district over the last several years, especially with our agreement with NAACP, et cetera, that we give them the courtesy of asking them for input and ideas. And, and I go back to what I said earlier, what, what kind of certification, what kind of training, what kind of licenses do these people need, the coordinator and the, and the coach? Two other things, on the coach, it's the same issue as with the coordinator, that under job functions, it says maintain professional licensure and certifications, and in the minimum qualifications, we don't have that. As a matter of fact, the minimum qualifications for the coach is bachelor's, master's preferred, a teaching, valid teaching, it's basically teaching experience and teaching experience in the district. So what would set this individual who would be a good candidate for this position, what would set that candidate above some other candidates? And finally, I would ask for, you know, we're, we're getting all these new positions and I have not seen a revised organizational chart. We have for the coach, the coach, that's specific, reports to the Director of Diversity. The other position, attorney, staff or designated administrator, that's a lot more vague. And just one other question, if I might, Dr. Atkins, which, I've lost track of the hierarchy, which is a higher in the tiers of things, coordinator or coach?
Coordinator would be an administrative position, the coach would be a, like a teacher on assignment type position.
Okay. And so then, I'm going to come back and ask that why then is coordinator a higher level, bachelor's degree? Coach, bachelor's or higher, masters preferred? I, I think that we really need to look at the educational levels. Why do we even put, you know, why does a teacher need a bachelor's degree? If you're teaching HVAC, let's say, or you're teaching, well, back in the old days, it was woodshop, or do you need a bachelor's degree? Yeah, we've established that teachers are professionals and we have certain standards for them. And likewise, I believe, we must have standards for our people that serve in these higher level positions. And, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to be critical of, of HR, I'm just saying that these two, and I would favor separating these out if everybody will agree to that, and voting on the others separately. I see major, major problems here with the qualifications, job functions, training, et cetera.
If I could respond, as I said before, I do not have an issue with taking these two out. My, my real press is for the other ones, I really feel those need to move forward. I understand the level of concern. I also want to just emphasize that, that this is a process that, where human resources works with additional staff. In this case, you know, the Department of Director, you know, with Mr. Edie, we also work with Mr. Williams and, and one of the things as it relates to the, the reporting structure here, if you recall in our one-on-ones, we wanted to have this position of coordinator for the equity and civil rights be something that, that works with our staff attorney, because many of these equity concerns go, flow through his office as well. The other piece, and, and I know that we have, you know, a couple of members here from our NAACP educational advisory team, one of the things, if you look at the history of this position, they could speak to that, the person who handled these things had a direct line to the superintendent. We're trying to go back with this position and, and restore that historical significance, but also have it work directly with our staff attorney who works in this area of, when we have an equity complaint and when that goes to EOC. We really believe that using Mr. Williams' experience, that we can work with this individual, have them trained and reduce the number of these concerns district-wide by actually modeling it after the Office of Civil Rights in terms of how they do investigations and what they're looking for. So there is a difference between, you know, this is a coordinator position on salary schedule and it's not an administrator, so I misspoke before when I called it administrator, but, so typically the requirements for that on an educational level aren't as high. But still, having said that, I appreciate the, the comments, we'll take that under advisement. But one of the things, again, with the, the way that this is broken out and structured, we're trying to be more responsive as a district to these types of concerns, the equity I'm speaking of, in addition to the student portion of it with Title IX. On the other side, the coach with diversity, that is a, that piece is focused predominantly on training of staff, raising staff awareness and also helping Mr. Edie address academic concerns, particularly as it relates to closing achievement gaps and things like that. I think that, you know, that's a, that's something where we can improve our workforce and, and our training, and we wanted that focus on the academic side of the house, the student side of the house and the training for the employees. And then the other position here really focused on dealing with some of these equity and civil rights concerns in a very focused manner.
So I, I want to just clarify with Mrs. Vaughn that I understood what, what she was having a difficulty with, the minimum qualifications versus the essential- The minimum qualifications versus the essential and other job functions did not match up. And I think we had a conversation about that regarding one other position. So I think that, that, is that your issue? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, that's, that's part of it, and I have one other comment when you're done.
Okay, yeah, and I just wanted to comment that, well, I wanted to clarify that, because that was my understanding of the issue. Okay, thank you.
Can I say my other?
Yes.
You know, looking at these positions, and I'm going to go back to, you know, to further clarify for Ms. Fisher, really, you said, Dr. Atkins, you said something about make sure we get the training for these people. I would say, these people need to have the training coming in, and, you know, we're not just talking about race, color, ethnicity. We have major issues. We've had Title II issues. Doesn't this come under the civil rights, the ADA? We have Title IX issues. These people, really, to be effective at their job, what I'm saying is, and I want super, I'm not, I want these positions, but I want highly qualified people, and I don't see it, and I just want to, you know, because a lot of people, when they see civil rights, and, you know, since we've had issue with NAACP, they're thinking primarily race and color and ethnicity, but we also need to be very aware that civil rights includes ADA, it includes gender, it includes sexual orientation, gender identity, a lot of issues that this, these people need to be trained in.
Yes, ma'am, I'm aware of that, and I think you misunderstood.
Okay.
Their role would be to provide that type of training for our staff. That's how I see them helping the district. They would come into the position ready to do that. That's why we created it, because we feel that, you know, Mr. Eadie, you know, we brought him into the role, and one of the things I wanted him to do was to really assess what our district need is. This is an area that he has identified as a real need, and quite frankly, he doesn't have the bandwidth to provide the level of training that we really feel we need district-wide. So this is a person that would certainly support him in that role. But I have definitely listened to what you've had to say, and we will take all of that under advisement and bring you back a different job description. I think, you know, the mission, I mean, what I'm hearing, you're wanting the same thing that we want.
Right, absolutely, but I'm just wanting somebody who is trained and highly skilled right from the get-go, not somebody that we hire, and then the person's out of the office for six months, going to various trainings. I want somebody who's cost-effective for us and trained.
I understand.
Mr. Williams, can you inform me then, is there any other comment? Ms. Morgan, any comments?
Yes, I want to say, Ms. Giovinelli, for bringing to my attention the fact that coordinator capital projects management has already been discussed by construction advisory, so, and I also want to support what Dr. Atkins said, which is, this is, this is not about approving every single staff position. My concern with respect to the coordinator and coach is that we are making an organizational change. I'm less concerned about the job descriptions than just giving that advisory committee an opportunity to weigh in, to have a conversation with Mr. Eadie, so they understand exactly what lies behind this organizational change. So I am, again, suggesting that somebody make a motion to pull out the coordinator equity and civil rights compliance and coach diversity inclusion, table those for separated, and vote on the ballot.
Can we use that as a motion?
She have to repeat it?
No, not for me.
No, she can't make a motion, so, and procedurally, yes, someone would have to make a motion to amend the current item, and then...
And to pull out the two?
It would need to be seconded and then voted upon, and then you would need to make a second motion to accept that amendment.
Okay, I'm sorry, so we're making a motion to, for the change in item G2, correct?
Correct.
Okay, before we do, comment?
I just wanted to make a comment. I was there when Mr. Reckenbach...
Reckenbach.
I apologize, Scott. The reason he mentioned it to the industry people that were there was because the fact that they had already put that information out online, and they had not received any qualified candidates for that. So when you're in a room with people that are, that's what they do for a living, that's why he reached out to them and said, hey, if you have anybody or you know anybody, let them know this is what's taking place. So I just want to clarify that.
And that's why I made the comment about those positions, is it necessary for them to have that level of academia? So I'm not sure if it is. Dr. Atkins, is that something that's necessary for those positions? Okay, then I will acquiesce. So we have, Ms. Giovinelli, since you started all this...
Now, having said that, Madam Chair, I will say that if somebody comes in with experience, you know, and work experience, that we do have the ability to flex that, and that's usually a recommendation that I would make to the board, so we do have the ability to take that in.
So if it is changed, then you could do that, okay. All right, Ms. Giovinelli, go for it.
So I motion to amend G2, and, wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, G2...
To take out, I'm sorry, the coordinator and the coach position, and then move forward with the, approving the rest of the positions.
Yeah, and that, I would, I would address it this way, I would simply say, I would move to adopt the positions you are choosing to adopt and remove the other two positions. That's probably easier that way.
Okay, so I move to remove, I move to adopt the current positions, except for the coordinator and coach positions.
And if you could just highlight the positions that you're seeking to adopt, so that it's clear for the record.
The coordinator and equity, civil rights compliance.
Do you want to approve?
Oh, the other ones? Oh, gosh, I got to go.
The three you want to approve.
Oh, okay, so, now you're violating my... I'm sorry. All right, so, okay, so, okay, so, the, I want to motion to approve the Director of School Counseling and Mental Health Services, the Specialist Support District Intervention, the Manager and Project Facilities, and the Coordinator Capital Projects Management. Those positions, move, I motion to move forward with those and pull out.
And do all of it, or just do that part first?
That's fine.
Okay, so, do I have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Fisher. And now we can move on to the vote on that? Any discussion again?
Now, yeah, now you would move to, once you vote to approve that amendment, then you would subsequently vote again...
Go back and approve the other.
To remove the amendment.
Okay, so, do we record our vote, or is this a verbal vote?
Verbal.
A verbal vote, Susan says, so all in favor of that motion, please signify with a thumb.
Aye.
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 Okay, so it passes 6-0, and now your second portion, Ms. Giovinelli.
Oh.
You're moving to...
I'm motion to...
To accept the amendment.
To remove the two positions. Can we just table them? Can that be tabled?
Well, no, you've already amended the mo, you've already amended the item, so now the item that is currently on the floor is the vote to approve those four positions that you previously stated. So now the board needs to vote to approve that, that actual item. That becomes the new item, so you've now created the new item, so now you need to vote to approve the item you created, if that makes any sense.
Oh, we have to approve it.
Okay, that's the second one. Okay, so we're voting to approve the four items that are still existing on...
Yes.
Is everybody in agreement there? Okay, so please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 6-0, it passes.
There you go.
We have a lesson in Robert's rules.
Yes.
Okay, and now, what, how, does she put for the other two? Is that okay? Does she have to say anything with that?
That's what we're done, just hold.
Okay.
No, you're fine.
We're fine?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. So now, oh, goodie, we get to go and do it all again with I-7, which is, Dr. Atkins, can you please explain I-7 for us?
It's approval of the contract for Newport Board Group to provide advisory services to the operations division. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Okay, can I have a motion for this pulled item? Is that?
Yeah, I motion to pull it.
A second? Second. Okay, second, do you have that, Susan? Okay, and now discussion on item I-7.
So, okay, so I actually pulled this item, and, but Dr. Atkins has answered most of my questions. My only concern with this now is, did, you know, did we budget for this? Like, that, was this in the budget for, because this was something that I wasn't, we didn't have a lot of conversation on, so that's really, you answered a lot of it in the email today, thank you.
Well, thank Mr. Davis, he was a big help there. In terms of budgeting for this particular position, right now, we have, we have some vacant positions in the operations division, so the dollars that were allocated for those vacant positions would actually be used to fund this contract.
And is this where, in our discussions, you were saying that it would be the $50,000 or below, or is it above $50,000, and how will we address that?
Well, the reason I brought this to the board is that we were not sure, the original contract that was brought to me set up to six months. So if you, if you take those amounts individually per month and you add them up, then when you get to six months, that goes over the $50,000 threshold. Now, both of our attorneys felt it was okay to just go ahead as a superintendent and approve that contract, because the original contract by itself would be an expenditure that was less than $50,000. However, and, you know, as we were discussing it, we really felt that in the spirit of transparency and the possibility of this going over $50,000 mark, it would just be behoove all of us, just for me to bring that forward to the board for approval in the, in case a situation would arise where it would go into that four months or beyond. So that's why, that's why it's here.
Is this, would this be like a limited contract, that they are contracted for a certain number of months, or just to finish the job, or how would that be stated?
Be like up to six months. We don't expect the work to take that long, and we hope that they can help facilitate a search for chief operations position, and in addition to that, help us with the restructuring of that division, as well as advising the superintendent and staff related to day-to-day operations of the operations division.
Okay, and we had discussed in one of our meetings that since they're looking at organizational structure and that they can do that, and the position that we're in now, waiting for a position to be filled for the board auditor that could do those types of things, is it a possibility of expanding their role to look at the organization as a whole, like organizational chart, and how much more would that be? Because if they could do it now, rather than us waiting until we have someone in place to do it, we could be saving, you know, dollars.
Right. Well, it's certainly a discussion that I said that, you know, we would be having with Mr. Pratt when he arrived. I think I'm, if this gets approved, I'll be meeting with him hopefully in a couple days. One of the definite things that he would certainly look at would be organizational alignment within the operations division, but as you and I talked about, you know, is the current configuration appropriate, is the departments that are within operations appropriate for that division as an operations division, because, you know, we've certainly made changes to our structure moving forward. So I would be happy to have that discussion and bring that information back to you.
And let us know the additional cost.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, Ms. Fisher, did you?
No, Mrs. Vaughn.
Who? Oh, Ms. Vaughn, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's, that's okay. One of my concerns with this was that it is, it looks like, unless I misread, that it's a monthly, it's month by month, right?
That's correct.
And that it's budgeted for the rest of this fiscal year, but the way I read it is that it's possible that we would go into the next fiscal year, so that would be additional monies at that point. That was one concern. I know you can't totally trust the internet, but there's some not very nice things out there on the internet about, about this group, and so that just brought to mind, have we ever used, first, have we ever used this company before, and second, as we were choosing this, did we get recommendations from other school districts? Because I know what you, I guess what Trey sent out had something about, they worked with a particular school district, but everything I read from their website had nothing to do with, it talked about different businesses and companies, and it really didn't address school districts. And I know this has been an issue in the past, kind of on the flip side, where we've looked at, you know, it's become something like, well, you know, so-and-so has no experience with the school district, and we really need it. So the two questions then would be, did we get some recommendations from maybe a school district and other organizations that have used this company, and how did we come to choose this company in the first place? Is this something that, you know, I mean, and not to be flippant, but is Mr. Pratt somebody's brother-in-law, or, you know, I don't know, that's what I'm asking you.
And I, I'll ask Mr. Davis to come up and address this, if he would, but I will, let me, let me give you my perspective on it. We were fortunate enough to have Mr. Davis in our organization, and who, through his affiliation with other companies, he has had experience working directly with this company in the past and has been satisfied with their work. He also was able to recommend this company previously to us even employing them to work with Martin County on some of their operational issues, and they had reported that they were very satisfied with the work, is my understanding. But, so that's what led us to this decision, I'll let him elaborate.
Is he your brother-in-law?
Yeah, good evening, board, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Williams, Susan. So yes, I do appreciate the chance to stand up here and talk about, you know, Newport Board Group. I've had the opportunity, quite frankly, to work with many of the general managing partners, had Newport Board, including John Pratt, some for up to 20 years, some over that. When I owned my previous company, Remotus Technologies, a global ISV services organization, had the opportunity to work with them on establishing, you know, our human capital management initiatives. I also consulted with them to assist in sectors, various sectors, on board formation, you know, as well as in other strategic initiatives. So they have a wealth of experience, over 600, you know, members that are all, you know, senior administrators, C-level executives from CEOs, chief operating officers, and even former superintendents, you know. The most recent experience, very recent experience with John Pratt was with Martin County to help them restructure, to focus on their organizational architecture and restructure their operations division, and that was, you know, across-the-board operations, not just with technology. He has a wealth of experience as well, as a former, you know, senior executive, working all operations in public sector for IBM, with a $4.3 billion, you know, business unit at IBM, specifically global services. So he has a wealth of experience there. I think the plus side, and I think it's important to understand this with Newport, is that you're not getting a single resource on site. The value of Newport is the fact that they can bring in any one of those in an advising capacity to assist. So there's a gentleman named Brent Sapp, for example, lives in Martin County, that also helped with Martin County, part of Newport Board. Dr. Constantino is a former superintendent, both at a state level and also a school district level, is on a transition team for the governor of Virginia, so has a wealth of experience there, both... So there's a wealth of experience there, both in the private sector and the public sector. And quite frankly, fusing those together, you're going to get the, you know, those recommended practices that you desire. Now, let me, if I don't, if you don't mind, let me take a step back to when I, when I joined this district, just for a moment. Now, while I had the opportunity to work with K-12 and higher-ed organizations around the world, you know, all the way in Quasimlatale University, you know, and myriad of other places, that wasn't my primary area of expertise. You know, I ran a global ISV organization, services organization. So, you know, I brought those same best practices or recommended practices in, and fused that with my experience that I had and working with fantastic people here in the school district. So, so anyway, I think, I think you would, you would benefit greatly from a broad experience and that network that they have.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Jevonell?
My only recommendation, too, is to avoid us pulling it. If we had been briefed on it a little bit beforehand, I think that would have eliminated a lot of this. That's all. You know, have a quick briefing on it, that, on something like this, that's all.
Understand. We'll keep, we'll keep getting better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is the first time that Mr. Davis has ever addressed the board that I've understood what he said.
We're getting smarter, he's getting more.
We're talking, he wasn't talking about technology.
Occasionally, I do take my, my technology hat off and put my management consulting hat on, so, yeah. As a former CEO, not a CTO or CIO, so.
I appreciate you bringing this opportunity to the board.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, we will try this one more time. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, so if you will direct us, Mr. Williams, as to how we do this part.
Well, now you can vote to approve the original item as, if that's what you choose to do.
Is that okay, Ms. Jevonell?
Yep.
Okay, so the motion is out there, it's been seconded, so we just do the vote?
Correct.
Okay, so everyone that votes in favor of leaving this?
Do we want to see it from Ms. Morgan?
Oh, Ms. Morgan.
Oh, Ms. Morgan, did you have comments?
I have no comment, thank you.
All right, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Six, zero.
Just for the, just for the record, and sorry to get technical on this, but did we have a motion to actually approve the item as written? Okay, so I just, who seconded it? I was just, okay, okay, we're good, sorry.
Wait a minute. I don't know, did we have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
And Jordan seconded, right, okay. Okay, are we all in compliance?
You are now.
Okay, and there were, let's see, were there any other pulled items? No. So, okay. That was a day's work. Okay, so now we move on to, included in the approval of the consent items on the agenda are the resolutions proclaiming April 2019 as Florida School Volunteer Month, April 2019 as National Autism Awareness Month, as well as April 2019 as School Library Month. Dr. Atkins, could you please, I don't think you have any, you have two introductions, I'm so sorry, with new assignments and that were approved under the consent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first one is under transfer and change of assignment, Sherri Wenzel, from Student Welfare and Attendant to School Social Worker to Student Services Coordinator, Mental Health We're also super happy about this second one, Lori Brooks, Student Services Assistant Director, School Counseling and Mental Health Services to Director, School Counseling and Mental Health Services.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, I just want to make sure the last vote and everything covered all the rest of the consent items, correct?
Correct, you originally voted to pass the consent items. The only items that were pulled were amended, and then the other one was voted, so you're fine.
We got so far down in there, I wasn't sure. And, public hearings. Okay, we are down to board member comments, and let's start with Ms. Patrica tonight.
We all went to, and I'm going to say this incorrectly, the Grand Dom's Tea. Did I say it correctly? It was so fancy, I can't even say it correctly. It was too fancy.
Put your pinky up when you talk about it.
We went, we went to the tea this afternoon, and I know that Ms. Morgan would have been there had she been in town. And it was really my privilege to be there. I was just really blown away by the whole thing. I will say that selfishly, I'm like, holy cow, I get to work with her. So that was pretty cool. And just for the benefit of people here, I'd like to read, we got this cool thing, pamphlet, what is it called? Program. And there's a bio of Ms. Fisher, and I want to read two of the paragraphs, because they were very impactful to me. Recently re-elected to her third term as a District Representative for the Lee County School Board, Mary Fisher is a recognizable name in southwest Florida. Well-known for her devotion to education and children's services, the blankety-blank year-old is also admired for her giving spirit and optimistic approach to life. Skipping down to the third paragraph, when Mary's young family moved to Cape Coral in 1977, she soon began teaching in Lee County. Her passion for social work led to serving as a certified family mediator for the Florida Supreme Court, national certified trainer for Bully Safe USA, program director for the Guardian-Adletem Foundation, 20th Judicial Circuit, and medical social worker for what is now Lee Health. She later earned her degree in counseling and returned to the school system as a school counselor and prevention specialist until retirement. I think that that sort of encapsulates your devotion to students in Lee County and why you're our go-to mental health person on this board, and why you're considered the queen of Cape Coral. And they were selling artwork on the tables today, and we decided to get together and chip in and provide you with a commemoration.
Yeah.
And I'll even hug you, which I don't like to do, but I will. It's not me that I don't like to hug, it's here.
Anything else?
That's the best part.
Everybody.
Is that all, Ms. Patrica?
Oh, wait a minute, the other thing is Lori, you're awesome, and you deserve this and so much more. Thank you for the work you do for our children. No, I'm done.
Okay, Ms. Jordan?
I, I'm just trying to get clarification on the coordinator and the coach positions, because I really do believe that they are vital, those positions are vital to the service community and to allow us to move forward. So just trying to find clarification on that. Coming back with that, or? Can we come back?
Well, yes, my, as I understand the direction, we're going to take those two job descriptions back, review board member comments. We will certainly circle back with the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee and get their feedback. And then hopefully also have an opportunity, and I'll see James Buchanan and Dr. Chapman in the, in the audience. We were not able to connect our last quarterly meeting, but it may give us also an opportunity to sit down with them as it relates to this job description as well. And then what we will do is bring this, bring them back to the first available job description I anticipate, or first available board meeting, excuse me. I anticipate this work shouldn't take too long, as long as schedules allow.
Thank you. Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I have a couple of comments tonight. As a former lifelong English literature teacher, I love libraries. And so I look at the resolution that April is School Library Month really two different ways. One, that's terrific, we need to celebrate our libraries. But on the other hand, I always find it ironic when, as a school district, we celebrate national, or we celebrate School Library Month, and because of budget cuts, so many of our schools no longer have professional media specialists. And I find that heartbreaking. And I won't even address the fact that Vanita Springs High School has no books in its library. I know, I mean, back in the past century, but there's just something about books near and dear to my heart. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, and I'm sure everybody on this board and all of you feel the same way, that our hearts are broken over the terrible tragedy a couple days ago with one of our students, a little girl from Trafalgar Elementary School, who was the victim of a hit-and-run driver, and she did pass away. And so I'm sure I speak for everybody when I say our thoughts and prayers go out to this little girl's family. The other thing that comes to mind is that this really, really underscores our need as a school district to work in tandem with our community, with the government entities, because we can't do it by ourselves. We can't, nor, I mean, we just don't have the money that we can go out and put in well-lit sidewalks. And I do know that Cape Coral has done a wonderful job in stepping up, and I don't remember the amount that they designated, but I know, maybe Mary remembers, but they've stepped up and they really have increased the number of sidewalks near schools and bus stops and put lights. But we still have a long way to go, and I'm sure Ms. Gittens will reiterate what I say, when I say that Lee High Acres, there are very, very few sidewalks, it's very poorly lit, and so we just need to do something to make sure that these kinds of heartbreaking tragedies don't happen again to any of our children. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Let's see, Ms. Fisher?
Okay, again, my, my heart is with that family and prayers go out to them. I often stop in the morning and tell kids not to sit on the side of the road, because they're often precariously close to the road. And as we know in this situation, the driver went a little bit off the road, and it's tragic. So I think that we need to beef up our education as part of our comprehensive health education program, and remind children that they need to stand back when they're at their bus stops, and also to try to help to educate the community. I mean, it's really very important. One life lost is too many, and this year, we've lost two so far. I want to thank Alicia for her service with the Student Advisory Board. This is her last year, because she'll be graduating, but she started with us as a middle-schooler, and she has been an outstanding member and has worked very hard and does a lot to help her community at North Fort Myers High and elsewhere. So thank you, it's been a pleasure to get to know you and watch you grow up, and we're so glad that you were part of our committee.
Thank you.
And of course, I want to compliment the Tropic Isles singing sea stars and those who came and spoke on behalf of arts education. You know, art, arts in schools keeps kids in schools, and I think has a dramatic impact on our graduation rate. So thank you, guys, for coming and talking about that and reminding us. And I want to thank Dr. Santini, Dr. Doug Santini, for all he does to really keep this alive in our community. I'm going to thank my fellow board members and other staff, and our wonderful office ladies, Susan and Mary, for attending the Grand Dom celebration. It is a humbling honor, and one of the ladies put it into perspective, she said, you know, we haven't done more in the community than many other people did, except we got old enough to get the award. So I want to thank everyone, and, and nothing is accomplished alone, and, and any contributions that I have made to the community have been in tandem with all of you, so thank you again for that.
Ms. Fisher, Ms. Reader, and Ms. Johnson also participated in the gift, the commemorative gift.
And yes, and that's why I thank them, too. And I was so glad that they were able to be, be there. They always make arrangements for us to go to events, and I was honored that they were able to join us today. That was great. I was looking on the internet the other day, Trey, I really was, and I found, I found something that really hit my eye, and I'm going to take a little bit of, oh, no, no, I have to stop here. I have had an opportunity to work with Lori Brooks and Sherri Wenzel over the years, and I am delighted at their promotions, and I know that they'll continue to do an outstanding job, just as they have in creating our wonderful mental health plan that's new to this district, which is a model for other, other places around the state. So I'm very happy for you and thank you, and you know, you're going to work harder. I know you are. So congratulations. And now, my guide for global leadership. All I really need to know I learned in kindergarten. All I really need to know about how to live and what to do and how to be, I learned in kindergarten. Wisdom was not at the top of the graduate school mountain, but there in the sand pile at the school. I wish we still had sandboxes in our kindergartens. These are the things I learned. Share everything, play fair, don't hit people, put things back where you found them, clean up your own mess, don't take things that aren't yours, say you're sorry when you hurt somebody, wash your hands before you eat, flush, warm cookies and cold milk are good for you, live a balanced life, learn some, think some, draw and paint, and sing and dance, and play and work some every day, take a nap every day. When you go out in the world, watch out for traffic, hold hands, and stick together. Be aware of wonder. Remember the little seed in the styrofoam cup, the roots go down, the plant goes up, and nobody really knows how or why, but we are all like that. Goldfish and hamsters and white mice and even little seed in the styrofoam cup, they all die, so do we. And remember the Dick and Jane books and the first word you learned, the biggest word of all, look. I also will add, listen to that. Everything you need to know is in there somewhere, the golden rule and love and basic sanitation, ecology and politics and equality and sane living. Take any one of these items and extrapolate it into sophisticated adult terms, apply it to your family or your work-life or government or your world, and it holds true and clear and firm. Think of what a better world it would be if we all, the whole world, had cookies and milk at about 3:00 in the afternoon and then lay down with our blankies for a nap. Or if all governments had a basic policy to always put things back where they found them and to clean up their own mess. And it is still true, no matter how old you are, when you go out in the world, it's best to hold hands and stick together.
Very good. Thank you so much. Ms. Jevonell, you can follow that.
Yeah, I can't, but anyways, congratulations, Mary, it was really nice being there today and seeing that.
Thank you, I'm glad you were there, I appreciate it.
So, and congratulations on your promotions, ladies. And that's it for me, I'm gonna go to the.
Okay.
Oh, one thing.
Yes.
Forgot. Are we doing deltas and pluses? I want to ask that, that's what I forgot.
There have been some issues as far as people attending, and so I'm wondering if we should bring it up for discussion. We did a consensus vote in order to do it, and I'm not sure if we should discuss it, because there's, there's conflicting as to people attending and if we're all in or not all in.
The consensus vote was to give it a six-month try, and we've canceled 30% of them, so I'm not sure we've given it the real college try at this point. I think it's a great opportunity for self-evaluation, which I also think we really need.
Okay, I had one discussion with Dr. Carlin, and we were talking about it, and the, the alternative would be to have like a monthly meeting where we discuss all the items we've done that month, and to, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out to anybody, rather than having each time right afterwards. Because one of the things is, it gives us a little more time to gather thoughts.
I think that if we wait and do it on a monthly basis, you forget what has taken place. So, it's better to do things and be fresh and have it in your mind at that moment than to write it down and come back a month later about it, just like your children. You correct them at the moment, not a month later. So, it's, I just think we need to...
Don't forget Catherine.
That's my comment.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes, I agree.
You...
Ms. Jordan just said.
Um, so, shall we, do we vote to, can we do that at this point?
We already decided that we will automatically go to pluses and deltas at the end of our reaction meeting. That's a decision that we've already made.
But are we not allowed to change if, I mean, it was to give it a try for six months if it... When is the six-months?
May.
So, that means like four more meetings. I'm the only one talking. Anyone else?
Last meeting, I was staying. Nobody else did. I mean, I was here.
I was told it was canceled.
We didn't know.
All right. So, are we saying that we're going to continue it until May? Ms. Fisher, you?
I would like to continue to do it.
Okay.
It's, it's an optional meeting. Which is fine with me, an optional meeting. It is optional, but your participation is really important to me. As my teammate, your participation is really important to me. Because if I violate a protocol, I need to know. And it sort of establishes our way of work, and it helps me to understand where you're coming from, and hopefully will help you to understand where I'm coming from. And so, it's important to me personally and professionally that you participate and that you be there.
Okay. So, it sounds as though that we had consensus before, and it sounds like we have consensus still. So, it stands until May, which is the six-months, then to, I guess, revisit it at that point.
Okay.
Is that agreed? Okay. Okay. Before we move on, we would like comments from our student representative, Alicia Berna.
I would just like to thank the board, Dr. Atkins, Ms. Johnson, Madam Chair, but especially Ms. Fisher, just for everything that you've done for me over the past five years. I really appreciated it. You deserve every bit of recognition that you've gotten. And I just, I will be eternally grateful for everything that you've taught me over the past five years. So, thank you for that.
You've taught me a lot, too.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Brooks on your promotion. I believe you deserve it just as much as Ms. Fisher deserves her recognition. And I'd just like to thank the members of the public who came out to advocate their concerns this evening. That's something, I'm a big believer in advocacy, especially when it comes to the school board and to the city, and I really think it's important that people come out and share their concerns. So, I really appreciate getting the opportunity to hear those. And I also, just being an art student at North Fort Myers High School, I really appreciated, I mean, three of our four speakers tonight came and shared their concerns about just the recognition and the importance of arts programs. And being someone who, I'm not really involved in visual art, that's not my expertise, but I have a huge appreciation for it. And being someone who is actively involved in my school's music program, I definitely see the benefit of prioritizing that within our schools. I think that's something that is beautiful about this school district. We have, you know, Cypress and North Fort Myers High School, as well as the programs within all of the other schools. But I just think that we're very blessed to have such strong programs within the district, and I just hope that's something that we all, we always hold on to and we don't let slip away. So, I really appreciate what you, what you've shared tonight, and I definitely agree that that's something that is, should be very valued. I think that's something that makes our school district stand out. When we saw all the students tonight recognized for their artwork in terms of dance. And like I said, I think that's something that really sets us apart, and I'm very proud of that within the school district. So, thank you once again for allowing me to sit in on this meeting. I really appreciate it. I think it was an excellent opportunity, and thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. I have a couple of comments. One, on April 1st, it's out on board docs. We're going to have a workshop the morning of April 1st on safety and security. So, I'm sure we will touch on the thought about the safety at the bus stops and all of that as well. And it's mainly, though, to talk about with the law enforcement officers, the sheriffs, and law enforcement will be here, and we'll have a workshop to talk about the Safety and Security Bill that has just gone through the legislature as well, and to discuss how can we collaborate to put all of this into effect and do what's best for our children.
Can I ask a question surrounding that?
Yes.
The workshop?
Yes.
When is Attorney Dode going to be back?
Friday.
Friday. I'd like to ask him for a summary of the high points of the legislation so that we can focus our discussion on Monday.
We have that from, I got that from Ashley.
I saw what you sent, but I'm not sure if there's anything else working its way through Tallahassee right now that has to do with safety and security that should be brought to our attention.
Okay. I'll check with Carolyn Ashley, because that's where he got it and I got it as well, but I'll double-check. That will be a workshop, so there will not be public comment, but we invite everyone to visit us or watch the process. I went to South High School. Mr. Matthews and the crew invited me to their talent contest, and it was very good. And especially the fact that a young man named E.J., who was in their life skills program, won the competition. And he was so good, and he was so proud, that everyone was cheering so much for him. It was really, really great. We'll post up some of the pictures of that. And thanks to South for inviting me. I also took a tour of Palm Acres Charter, which is kind of a feeder school from our high schools out in the East Zone. A lot of students out there, and they're doing a great job helping our students take that extra step and graduate. They did mention to me that their enrollment is down when the economy is good, and I didn't think about that. But when the economy is good and kids can get jobs readily, then they don't think about, well, I need to get, finish my diploma or whatever, because I've got a job already making money. So, that kind of really affects our graduation rates as well. Ms. Brooks, you know I love you. Thank you. Yeah, that was a great job for both of you, and congratulations. Let's see. Okay. I have, at our workshop today, I was very glad and thank you all to agreeing. One of the things I have talked to the superintendent about is a new person coming on the board, a lot of times you don't know exactly what to do. First day you come in and there's all this stuff, and you get invited here and there and everywhere, but what is your focus? And my thought was that if someone comes on the board every two years, if we don't give them a focus or a focal point, that's what creates issues. Everybody needs to know what it is they have to do. So, we all agreed that we are going to use the strategic plan initiatives as kind of our focal point. And Dr. Carlin and the superintendent and I are working on finalizing that. But in the near future, each one of the board members will get an opportunity to select one of the initiatives, and it will, we will give them the departments that they will interact with, the community, and we will get an opportunity to not only learn more about what's going on in the district, but also to add our expertise or help out wherever we can as far as furthering our strategic plan. That's kind of like our bible for all of us, and if the strategic plan is a success, then we are all a success. So, with this project, each one will have an opportunity for a year or so, we'll decide that later, to help out with an initiative. And I'm very excited, and I thank all of you so much for voting for that. Lastly, tomorrow evening in Lehigh, I'm having a town hall, and I call it a fireside chat because when I was running for office, I told people that I would do town halls just to hear, it's kind of like my report card, what's going well, what could we do differently? So, it's kind of scary. But anyway, so if you're in District 5 or just want to come out and join us, we'll be at the Water Management District off of Lee Boulevard. And come by and ask a question or whatever. We're going to pray first, so it'll be okay. Anyway, I think that's all that...
Ms. Morgan.
I'm sorry? Oh, Ms. Morgan, I left you out. You're supposed to say "hey" or something.
I have no comments this evening, thank you.
I hope you're enjoying your time away.
I am. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. And I also want to say, before I introduce our attorney for the night, Mr. Williams, thank you so much for being brave and taking on, helping us with this. And now, if you have comments, please.
I actually have one comment. Since we have representatives from the Education Committee for the NAACP, actually, you should be hearing from my office rather shortly. We're in the process of reviewing the Student Code of Conduct, and I've been asked to give my feedback with respect to the current code, and I welcome any suggestions from the Education Committee on how we can modify or make changes to that code to also entertain alternatives to Success Academy and some of the other things that are in the Student Code of Conduct. So, to that extent, and in furtherance of the memorandum of understanding that we have with the NAACP, again, I would extend that invitation to you as well as anyone else out there that has comments.
Okay. Thank you so much. Superintendent?
Well, just, first of all, appreciation for the board this evening for, you know, for talking about the tragedy that started earlier this week. I mean, we're, you know, it was a difficult way to start out the week, and as was pointed out, it's actually the second one. And I think our community certainly does need to come together around that issue because it's, you know, the first student was North Fort Myers, this one, you know, and the northern Cape Coral, but we also have issues in other places around. So, thank you for pointing it out, and I do agree that we do need to work with our community partners. Alicia, very, very impressed. I didn't realize this was your fifth year serving on the Student Advisory Committee. She impressed me in her role as the chair. And just to give you one example, I remember coming to the Student Advisory Committee and talking about, I think it was student safety and security, and so she recognized me to come up and do my presentation and so forth, and then time was up, and I was promptly dismissed. But, yeah, I thought, what, you know, these young people, we could learn something from them in terms of how to run a meeting. Very efficient and very, very professional. I mean, honestly, very professional. And every single time that I visit, you know, the Student Advisory Committee, and again, she has been the chair, I've always walked away from that, just impressed with our students and really impressed with the professionalism in which they conduct themselves. So, you've done great work and your accomplishments are amazing, so thank you so much for what you've done for that advisory committee, and best of wishes in the future. And that's all my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel remiss, Lauren, I'm going to ask a question of you. If you could let us know the name of the student that lost her life. I feel like we're talking about the student and we haven't said the name. Do we?
Leyla Aiken. Eighteen years old. Leyla?
Leyla?
Aiken.
Aiken. Okay. Thank you. I felt bad that we didn't mention her name, and our thoughts and prayers go out to Leyla's family and her friends and at her school as well. And we'll have to work on...
Doing better.
Doing more things. So, thank you, and the next, on Monday, April 1st, there'll be a board meeting, 9:00, and that's the one on the safety and security. On Tuesday, April 9th, there'll be a board briefing meeting at 2:00 and a regular board meeting at 6:00. And I believe the first week of April, we are, the majority of us are going up to Tallahassee. So, we will have lots of things to bring back and tell you from that. At this point, having no other business, have I covered everything everywhere? Okay. Having no other business to come before the body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
It's moved.
And Ms. Giovanni, seconded? Nobody wants to second. Ms. Jordan? No one wants to leave. We're having such fun. It's been moved, and you can record your vote, and then we will adjourn to the pluses and deltas. And thank you all for coming in the audience. I appreciate your presence.